I now call to order the regular meeting of the City Council and Housing Authority of Tuesday, September 16, 2025. Now, please join me and the rest of the council by standing, and a video is going to play, and we're all going to sing the National Anthem at the top of our voice, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. You're in very good voice tonight. Now's the time for our moment of solemn expression, and tonight we're led by Reverend George Okusi from St. John the Divine Episcopal Church. Reverend, you have the floor.
I will request everybody to allow me to use the Book of Common Prayer. That's where I get the prayer from. We are going to pray for the human family as we start our meeting. Let us pray. O God, you made us in your own image and redeemed us through Jesus, your Son. Look with compassion on the whole human family. Take away the arrogance and hatred which infect our hearts. Break down the walls that separate us. Unite us in bonds of love and work through our struggle and confusion to accomplish your purposes on earth and especially in the city of Costa Mesa. That in your good time, all nations and races may serve you in harmony around your heavenly throne through Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen, and thank you.
Thank you very much, Reverend. Let's hear it for the Reverend. Thank you very much. Okay, so now we're to our point of the roll call. We have to do a voice roll call. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Councilmember Pettis.
Here.
Councilmember Beulah.
Here.
Councilmember Gamarros.
Here.
Councilmember Marr.
Here.
And if you could please make a brown act statement?
I am taking the meeting remotely. I am on work travel. I apologize I am not there, and there are no other people in the room with me.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Chavez.
Here.
Mayor Stevens.
Here.
And the record will reflect that Councilmember Reynolds is absent.
All right. So now we're to the City Attorney's Closed Session Report. Madam City Attorney, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. On items one and two of the closed session agenda, existing litigation for the national opioid settlement Purdue Pharma and Alvejin, Amneal, et cetera, the council took action in closed session on motion by Councilmember Beulah, seconded by Mayor Protem Chavez, and then a vote of six to zero with Councilmember Reynolds' absence to participate in the settlements in those cases to ensure that the citizens of Costa Mesa are reimbursed for some of the ravages of the opioid abuse situation. The City Council gave direction on items three and four, and on item five, the City Council gave direction to the city attorney to negotiate a city manager agreement with Cecile Gallardo-Dali.
Thank you very much. So we have one presentation tonight. It's a very, very good one. It's the recognition of Anna Deluski for her outstanding public service. And so I'm going to read some remarks, and we're going to invite Anna to come on up and speak, and I'm going to provide some bio, and then we're going to take a beautiful picture with as many people as possible, as many people as Tony can fit in the frame. Okay. Tonight, we have the honor of recognizing one of Costa Mesa's most dedicated public servants, our very own payroll finance officer, Anna Deluski. Anna received the Government Finance Officers Association's 2025 recognition for outstanding public service, a national honor awarded to finance professionals who demonstrate extraordinary commitment to their organizations, colleagues, and communities. The Government Finance Officers Association is a professional association representing over 20,000 finance officials across the United States and Canada. This recognition highlights individuals who exemplify excellence in public service, those who support others, lead with integrity, and make a lasting positive impact. Importantly, the work of finance professionals often happens behind the scenes, but it is critical to the government's ability to serve its residents. Now, Anna, if you would come on up to the podium, and I'll read from your bio. Anna devoted more than 36 years of service to the city of Costa Mesa, beginning as a part-time employee in central services and rising to become the city's foremost expert in payroll operations. She has played a pivotal role in every aspect of payroll, from labor negotiations to implementation of systems that ensure accuracy for our over 10 bargaining units, including the complex operations of our police and fire departments. During the COVID-19 pandemic, Anna exhibited outstanding leadership by creating electronic tracking systems to recover payroll costs and skillfully navigating IRS audits to secure federal reimbursements for staff. Beyond her technical expertise, Anna is known for her outstanding customer service, personally meeting with every new hire and every employee preparing for retirement, always with empathy, kindness, and professionalism. Anna embodies the very best of public service. She is a trusted colleague, a problem solver, and a mentor to others in her field. Her commitment and integrity have left a lasting legacy in Costa Mesa's financial operations, and her recognition shines a national spotlight on her contribution. On behalf of the City Council, I want to congratulate Anna on receiving the recognition for outstanding public service. Anna, your dedication over the past 36 years has made Costa Mesa stronger, and tonight we are proud to celebrate you and your remarkable career of service. Now I will turn it over to, in a minute, but I want to say one more thing. Finance Director Carol Molina to say a few words, but before I do, is just for the public, I've been on council since 2016, and I've heard from numerous finance directors and people in management that Anna literally, single-handedly, is responsible for the employees being paid in the city of Costa Mesa. And I want to tell you, and I think I speak, I mean, I get a paycheck too. It's not much, but I get a paycheck. But on behalf of everyone at the city of Costa Mesa that gets a paycheck, we thank you, and on behalf of the residents, we thank you, and we literally could not run this city without you. And so the deepest gratitude and respect for your recognition, and I'm sure it's long overdue, that the United States of America and Canada finally figured out what we have here in the great city of Costa Mesa. And with that, I'll turn it over to Director Molina.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council. I just want to take a moment to thank Anna for her many years of professional public service, to the city of Costa Mesa, its retirees, and all of our staff, including our part-time staff. Our payroll goes, at any moment in time, can be over 700 paychecks go out in any payroll. They go up and down, obviously, because of our part-time, and she is meticulous. She ensures that all of the formulas are correct, people are paid timely, and not only that, if anybody has any questions, she takes the time to make sure they fully understand their pay. So for that, and her invaluable expertise, her candid attitude, and always willingness to help anybody who walks through her door, I want to thank Anna for her public service to the city of Costa Mesa, its full-time and part-time employees, retirees, and residents. Thank you, Anna. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you very much.
Anna, you have the floor.
Mayor Stevens, councilmembers, city attorney, directors, everyone here in the room, please. I'm very honored to receive this recognition. I work hard, and when I came to work, I always want to do my best. The city also presented for me opportunity to become who I am today. Like was said, I started in copy room, making a photocopy story six years ago. Just as a perspective, nobody had a photocopier, so if you needed one copy, you had to come and see Anna. So it's been a great career. I always enjoyed it, you know? I found a place that I felt myself, and I was recognized and appreciated, and worked both ways, and I'm forever grateful for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's all take a photo.
(Audio loss).
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 The first thing I'd like to do is ask the mayor, the city manager, the Parks Department, when are we going to see the Fairview Park master plan? We were going to see it July? No, no, no. October, August, September. Are we going to now see it in October, maybe November, maybe December? If we can get an update on that so the public can know exactly when they can start looking at that to give you guys information about what's important. And Refairview Developmental Center, are there any resident-based stakeholder groups or individuals included in your upcoming stakeholder meetings on Fairview Park? On Fairview Developmental Center, pardon me. Non-resident stakeholders have every right to, in fact, have their views expressed, but not preferentially over residents. A stakeholder meeting based on open discussion, where all participants can hear and respond to ideas related to any issue, are important. While some stakeholders might have more knowledge, they do not have more stake. Every piece of property in Costa Mesa is owned by somebody, and many of those ownerships are the biggest component of a person's net worth across the board. They clearly hold a stake in this community and deserve a clear and equal voice. A discussion-based stakeholder meeting should also be available to the community individuals in the form of a town hall meeting, where everyone can hear the ideas of others and directly comment on their feelings of those ideas in a fair and equitable way that is done before they're etched in stone. I urge you to find ways to not only have meetings that people are shown poster boards, but where they actually can communicate with each other about what they may or may not want in Costa Mesa. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jay. Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Just on behalf of myself, I wanted to comment on Consent Calendar item number six, the Legislative Platform. But before I do that, just wanted to say thank you for metal detectors what's outside, keeping us safe, keeping you safe. I know, you know, scary times, so I want to thank you. I texted my mom about it. She was like, it's good that you're going to be safe. So it's nice. So on the Legislative Platform, I just had a couple of questions and notes. First, I just wanted to say thank you very much for including Complete Streets in there. That's very important. Improving air quality is very important for our community, for our, for all the residents who live here. One of the notes in, I believe, the council policy is that the platform would be updated biannually, and I wanted to ask why once every two years, why not every year? That's just a simple question. And then I also wanted to ask, what happens if what is in the platform conflicts with a position that our partners may take? For example, the League of Cities may be against a certain housing bill, just to take an easy and obvious example. And the Legislative Platform in some areas encourages housing near transportation, near public transportation. So what happens when there is a conflict in that regard? Do we have an order of prioritization that says if the Legislative Platform says something that takes precedence? I think that would be good to include. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, Kim.
I don't know if I should talk. Okay. Good evening. My name is Kim Hendricks, and I'm here to talk to you about Fairview Nature Park. We are right in the middle of migration season, and the Pacific Flyway, a lot of birds are coming down from the north to Fairview Park. Here is a waterfowl data map. They also come from the mountains. And these little white-crowned sparrows, they are migratory birds. And these are the little dog on the hill that's being kicked out. Mr. Gamaros, you know how you made that analogy? These are the little dogs on the hill being kicked out. They don't have a voice. These migrate from the mountains. In the Western Burrowing Owl, okay? I don't know if you've read the report, okay? But it does say that with under 2,000 breeding pairs left, we can expect to see their imminent extirpation, the complete loss of the species in California. And the current signs are easily avoidable, but it's recommended to have the airfield temporarily closed for the winter season to reduce the stress and disturbance it may impose on burrowing owls. And I hope that you will listen to the experts, okay? Because there are other places for the Harbor Soaring Society to fly. They have Bob Swenson Memorial Field in Black Star Canyon, where most of them fly right now, which it has better amenities than Fairview Park, and it doesn't destroy sensitive habitat. And these, and it's very regimented there. But they have other choices, too. They can fly with less regimentation in Laguna Niguel at Kite Hill. They also have El Dorado Flying Field, which is kind of a free-for-all. So the HSS contract in May 2023 was for six months. Then behind closed doors, it was another six months. And now it seems like it's just keeping going. And the problem is, is that it is destroying a sensitive habitat. And this fascicle tar plant is a keystone species in Fairview Park. And you know, I come here all the time and try to educate you guys about the importance of biodiversity to us, too. Because without it, we will not survive, okay? And the whole community deserves Fairview Park, the largest vernal pool west of the Mississippi, okay? And in January 2023, the white-faced ibises came. I don't know if we're going to see them because they are getting kicked out. So I would like to ask you why you let them keep flying in a sensitive habitat when all the recommendations from the biologists say, stop, 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 stop. And these are the little birds you're kicking out.
Thank you, Kim. Yes, sir, you have the floor.
Hello. Let's keep in mind the words spoken about Anna earlier. Let's support others and lead with integrity. Everything I needed to learn about life, I learned in the Marine Corps, and that's the perspective I take here. So if I offend anybody, I'm not sorry. Just about a year ago, I introduced myself to this board. But a quick reminder for those who forgot, I am a Marine veteran and a leader in the veteran community here in Costa Mesa. I bought my house in Costa Mesa eight years ago because I absolutely enjoy my time here. Over the years, however, I've found there are cities in the neighboring area that provide better services, resources, and opportunities to veterans. That's why I'm here, to move Costa Mesa forward and how we address what we are providing to the best citizens in our community. This endeavor I have embarked on, growing veteran support, is not easy task. There is more pushback than I could have ever anticipated. The post, the pushback mostly comes from the cowards among us. I believe they are intimidated by my presence because I am only guided by facts and the truth. I can say and do anything and don't feel the need to modify my comments or actions as long as they are guided by facts and the truth. Because I'm able to act freely, my performance usually means my reputation precedes me. Here, I'll provide an example right now. If you're in this room and you're fat, lazy, and don't take care of your physical health, raise your hand. You see, some of you might be offended, but all I have done is highlight objective facts. In the military, we have physical standards, and I have held myself to those standards to this day. Don't be mad at me for giving you an opportunity to live in my world for just a moment. My objective is simple: create opportunities for providing better services and resources to veterans in our community. I want to honor the veterans that have served, and I want to salute the next generations that will serve. I am going to build a veteran coalition in this city in order to do just so. A year ago, I opened a line of communication with Andrea Marr in order to start, in order to get started. She and her team stopped replying earlier this year, and I no longer care what her excuse is. I'm sure it's because of my reputation, and she wants to hold on to whatever credibility she has. I'm sure she has used her military service countless times to gain favor and public opinion. However, moving forward, it will be much more difficult to find the support she needs in the veteran community when they are made aware of her disloyalty to building a veteran coalition that would provide better resources and services to our community. When Andrea refused to continue the dialogue of a veteran coalition when she turned her back on the core principles that men like me fought and died to secure, then she abandoned the integrity and dignity she once felt entitled to. It is servicemen like me that the American people are saluting. It is our service that is honored. It is because of our service I will obtain the resources I seek for the veterans in our city. The endeavor has been difficult, but it can be made easier. Work with me and the Coalition of Veterans in the community to make Costa Mesa better. Use this moment as a moment to reflect, as a reflection to do better in your personal life, if you raised your hand earlier, but more so as a public servant, supporting those that sacrifice so much more in order for the free people of this council to support us. I look forward to the conversations we share moving forward in order to make progress for veterans here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. I don't see anybody else. Anybody on Zoom?
Yes, phone number, ending in 613, please.
613, you have the floor.
Yes, hi, good evening. I'm calling about the Measure K workshops with the Neighborhoods Where We All Belong slogan. I watched one of your advertisements for it online, and it was very like, the message that came across from it was, we're going to reduce the cost of housing by building a lot of houses in Costa Mesa. And so that was a message that I took when I attended one of these meetings. So I, I wanted to see if that was the case. And so I, when I attended the meeting, you know, I asked one of the city employees, I said, how do you think you're going to lower the price of housing? And she said, well, you know, we're going to build a lot of houses, and that'll flood the market and then push down the cost of housing. And I asked her, I said, well, I'm a homeowner in Costa Mesa. How does that benefit me? Are you trying to lower the value of my property? And when I asked her this question, she was kind of caught off guard, like, uh-oh, this is a resident who's going to be negatively impacted by Measure K and our plan to address a housing crisis that doesn't exist. I was quickly passed off to another member, a senior member in the Planning Department, who reassured me that a huge amount of housing would not impact the value of my housing. We respectfully disagreed, and he told me he was a professional, which is usually something that somebody does when they don't like that you know a lot of things. But when you're flooding the market, you're impacting my, my property value. So I want to make it very clear to all the residents of Costa Mesa, the majority of the City Council and the Planning Department are actively trying to lower your property value by flooding the market with property. And instead of standing up for the stakeholders in this city, they've sided with Sacramento and Gavin Newsom and the Democrats, and they're trying to increase the population and make this state have more congressional seats. It's all about politics, and it's all about politics at the cost of our biggest investment that we have. So council member, Mayor Pro Tem Chavez, talks about being one of seven who's a winner. Chavez, 50% of this community did not want Measure K. And when they start to see how damaging this proposition is going to be here in our community, I guarantee it's going to be more like 75%. Residents, please be aware that elections have consequences. Don't get caught up with slogans, you know? When they say that this is not going to impact residential neighborhoods, that was a lie. Go ask the people who live next to 3150 Bear Street. Their neighborhoods are going to be ruined from both of those parks.
That's your time, Chris, Chris, that's your time. Who's next?
Next speaker's floor, please.
Who is it?
As per the Costa Mesa Police Department Traffic Collisions Report for August, which was a public records request on my part, there was a total of 146 collisions. That's almost five crashes every day for August. Three of those crashes involved pedestrians, and all three pedestrians were injured. Twelve of those crashes, excuse me, involved cyclists, and nine of those cyclists were injured. There were 131 crashes involving two or more cars. The worst number of crashes occurred on Harbor Boulevard with 25 crashes. Fairview Road was second with, excuse me, 15 crashes. Newport Boulevard came in a close third with 14 crashes. I am asking the Costa Mesa Police Department to be more vigilant in issuing traffic citations for speeding vehicles, which I see a lot of on Harbor Boulevard or on Fair Drive, and for distracted drivers. We need a safer city. Thank you.
Thanks, Flo.
No further speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Close public comments. So now it's time to hear from our council members to provide comments and committee reports. First up from District One is Councilmember Mike Beulie.
Thank you, Mayor, fellow council members, members of the public. I'm going to use my time tonight to talk about something that shouldn't be controversial, but nowadays, what isn't, you know? I'm going to talk about robust debate and civil discourse. You know, we've got this democratic republic of ours, and in order for it to be effective, we need to, as a citizen, citizenry, be able to have hard, robust, civil conversations about issues that impact all of us. And the great plan of this country of ours was that we'll have these peaceful transitions of power down at the ballot box. And in order for that plan, that design to work, we have to allow the citizenry to have that type of a robust and civil debate so we can be an informed republic, a reformed, an informed constituency. And as winds change and policies change and that debate changes, rather than get into civil wars about things, we head and do this wonderful thing every four years, every two years for our congresspeople, every six years for our senators, but we can then go and work on that peaceful transition of power, and we have a say in our governance. I've appreciated being a member of the City Council, even before being elected. I tune in on occasion, and in the last several years, I've appreciated the demeanor and the civil discourse amongst the colleagues up here. And since being on board the last six, seven months, I've continued to appreciate that. Here in public, we don't typically name-call. We don't typically take shots at each other. I won't be violating any Brown Act because I won't get into any substance, but we actually have robust discussions, and we do our best to get to a decision. Sometimes you win those arguments, sometimes you lose those arguments, but it's paramount. And I've been pleased to be part of this group, and I've been pleased at how this group has carried itself before I got here and even now that I've been here. I was pleased back on July 15th, when it got a little crazy in here, and I watched Mayor Stevens, and he did his best to control what was a pretty intense, tense night. And he allowed our First Amendment, as painful as it was, and sometimes it's difficult when some uncivil voices step up and say certain things, but he didn't shut people down, provided they didn't cross the line, and create a dangerous environment, and everybody on both sides of these various issues were allowed to speak. And I was proud that night, and I appreciated the way Mayor Stevens handled it, and I appreciated our law enforcement for the way they handled it. And I wanted to pivot from that to the members of the public. Ninety, maybe eighty, maybe 90% of the time when we do public comments, those of you who are engaged citizens, and I love the fact, you know, as a new guy here, one of my favorite parts is public comment, because it's our democracy at work. And you come here in this forum, you can be emotional, you can be passionate, and for the most part, the vast majority of you are very respectful, and you engage in civil discourse, and we do hear you. I've sat up here on a number of times, and I've listened to both sides on, prior to becoming a member of this council, issues that didn't get me up in the morning, didn't get me excited, I wasn't passionate about. But when I come here and I listen to members of the public who are passionate about certain issues, I do come away more informed, and it does impact me, and it informs me and influences me as I go forward. And I would just encourage the city and our community going forward that we continue that, and we try our best not to inflame and not to engage in personal attacks and not add to the, some of the hurtful and hateful rhetoric that has been so polarizing, even here in our little community and nationally. We try to remember to be civil, and we try not to cross that line, and we try not to demonize those who have different opinions. I know when I was planning to run, and I'll kind of end on this, I've known Mayor Stevens going back 30 years. Being a City Council member was never on my radar, but when I had made the decision to run, I called up John before I announced, before I did anything, and asked him if he wanted to sit down and have a coffee with me, because I thought it would have been awkward, a little bad form, if he heard for the first time that, Beulie, you're running for office? Why didn't you talk to me? And I sat with John, and although on grand national levels, we may have slight philosophical differences, or maybe major philosophical differences, but I shared with John that, you know, John, I know you personally, I know you as an individual, and I know that I will never question your sincerity. There may be an issue out there that you're wrestling with and that we are wrestling with, and you may have your sincere belief on the best way to address that issue. I won't question your sincerity, and I would hope that you'd convey that same indulgence to myself, that on occasion, we may just flat-out disagree on how best to achieve a goal or how best to solve a problem, but I would trust that you think I'm sincere in that belief. We're both just sincerely trying to do what's best for our community. We just may have a difference of opinion on how to get there. So that's it. I just wanted to share that tonight. We're dealing with some crazy times, and I appreciate law enforcement. I appreciate Chief Lapointe. I recently had to reach out to her because of some events, and it's crazy times. I heard a speaker tonight talk about Commissioner Martinez, about his mom wanting him to be safe. It's crazy that my wife is concerned that I need to be safe. So I'll end on that, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next up from District Two, Councilmember Lauren Gamaros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to be brief this evening, but I just want to take a moment and, to Councilmember Beulie's point, this is an opportunity for us to take some reflection and to be grateful for a number of things. One of them is our freedoms, our freedom of speech, our First Amendment rights, and we wouldn't be here today able to do that if it wasn't for those things. I do want to take a moment, and I want to thank our police department because they took measures to protect not only the City Council, but to take all of you in their thoughts and provide safety for everybody here in the room tonight. And if it wasn't for them, we may not have had this meeting this evening. So I do want to thank them. The metal detectors that you saw outside were for everyone's protection, and if it wasn't for that, we probably wouldn't be here. So thank you very much for what you've done for this community, and I look forward to being able to serve you, the constituents, in return. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thanks, Councilmember. Next up from remotely tonight from District Three, Councilmember Andrea Marr.
I'll be pretty quick tonight. I do apologize for not being there in person. My work schedule has taken me to the East Coast a couple of times now in the last month, and I just haven't been able to time it correctly with City Council meetings, so I do apologize, especially to constituents who I know are hoping to see me in person. Just wanted to talk about something fun. Art Venture is happening right now. If you haven't stopped by Norma Herzog, there was a great kickoff this weekend with, with music and dancing. There will be an official award ceremony next weekend, but we are the City of the Arts, and this is one of my favorite events of the year, something I started working on when I was on the Cultural Arts Committee way back before I ran for City Council. So just want to really encourage the community to come out. And then as it relates to the Measure K sites, you know, I think we get a lot of feedback, including tonight, Mr. Humphrey mentioned, you know, some of these community meetings can be intimidating for folks, they can be hours that don't work for a lot of working families. Sometimes you don't hear about them unless you are deeply connected to the city, and so I really appreciate that staff has been doing pop-up versions of this. So if you're at a coffee shop and you see city staff standing there talking to people about housing sites, please join in. I know they're going to be at Salty Bear Brewing and Neat Coffee and a couple of other popular places around town in the next couple of weeks, and so I really do appreciate that staff is making an effort to meet people where they're at. That's it for me tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for the time.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next up from District Six, Councilmember Jeff Pettis.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens. Appreciate it, like all the comments so far. And if I could take a point of personal privilege, I would like to request that we adjourn the meeting in the honor of Charlie Kirk. And I'm going to do my best to not talk about politics. A young man climbed up on a roof and sighted down the scope of a rifle and sent a 30-caliber bullet 2,500 feet per second into the life of another young man. And he was a father, and he had two little kids that loved him, just like I'm a father with kids that, that love me. And this one hit hard, not having to do with politics, but because we're human beings, and I believe at the root of all this is evil. This is good versus evil, not politics, but it's about dehumanization. And if we call each other Nazis, fascist, racist, or communists, then we're reducing the humanity of the person that we're flinging those things at at both sides, and it makes it easier to take action like that we saw over this past week. So I pray for him and his family, and that's all I'm going to have to say about that. I hope we can, I hope we can cut it out. And Jay Thweeny, on the town halls, yes, sir, I think that's an excellent and very reasonable request, and it's something that I've been, that, one of the things I campaigned on, and one of the things the staff has actually made a lot of efforts recently on, I know I've noticed there's been some pop-ups on this, on this topic regarding housing in the community, and I, there might even be whispers of a town hall-ish type thing coming forward. I don't want to get over my skis or in front of anybody, but if that happens, I hope it's an environment where there's a podium, and there's plenty of time, and there's, there's an environment where residents are able to mix with each other and ask their questions, and we stay there until all questions are answered. That is my hope and, dare I say, expectation sometime in the near future. And also, I saw Andrea Marr at Art Venture. Thank you for bringing that up. I almost forgot mentioning that. I think that it was a great event, and it was neat to see. Couldn't afford the $20,000 sculpture, but Ralph Taboda told me there might be something for 20 bucks, but I decided to, to give it a rest. But it was a neat event, and I love getting out there and seeing everybody in the community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next up is our Mayor Pro Tem from District Four, Manuel Chavez.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens. Thank you, everyone, for joining us today, especially those kids from Mesa High School, and happy Santa Caritas Month to everyone. Two quick comments, two quick updates and one comment. Yes, as mentioned by Chris Mar Mar and Chris Mar Pettis, this Saturday was the unveiling of Art Venture, a week-long event where we celebrate art in Costa Mesa. As a pleasure of being at the opening of the Norma Herzog Center for all the art exhibition pieces, I think we have over, I think it's over 200 artists and 131 pieces, or maybe inverse of that, but check it out, it's still there this whole week. Great way to celebrate the arts and celebrate each other in an artistic way. Saturday, the mayor and I attended the Waves of Hope Light Up the Night Gala for Families Forward. As you guys know, in my district, District Four, next to Memorial Elementary School, we have supportive housing for families who are formerly homeless through Families Forward. And what they do is they provide the families with wraparound services. Not only do they house the family members, they support them with financial literacy, help them get out of the situation, help them get food for their pantries and needs assistance, and really, they give hope for families that may not have had one before. It's a pleasure to have them in my district and a pleasure to support the organization at the gala with the mayor this past Saturday. And I just want to briefly talk to the students for a moment, because I know you're all here for your civics class that you have to take to graduate high school because of senior year. And one of the things that brings me joy every meeting I'm at is seeing you guys, because I know it's not often we go to council meetings and know what's going on, but this is really your chance to make your meetings and know what's going on, but this is really your chance to make your voice heard. And I want to share a little bit about someone named Albert O. Hirschman, who is a political theorist who had this idea called exit voice and loyalty, which is the three responses that we have as human beings when something's happening that we don't like. And I know right now in our country, there's a lot of turmoil. I think last week was a really heavy one for a lot of people. On Mondays, you know, Supreme Court came down saying that anyone could be, could be viewed as undocumented or immigrant if they are a certain skin tone or speak a certain language like Spanish. I believe it was Tuesday, we had the horrific murder of Charlie Kirk. And it's been a heavy week for a lot of people. And I think for one of the few times in my life, it's almost as if both sides had a crisis in the same week. And I'm bringing this up to the young people because it's you and I as young people of this country that are going to have to reckon with and figure out how to move forward with this. So just to quote those quick three things of exit voice and loyalty, you can choose to leave the country, which I know none of us want to do because this is our home and we want to stay here and have the opportunity this community provides us. We can choose to use our voice through voting, through protests, through talking to council meetings, talking to officials to advocate for the change we want to do. And last one is give you our loyalty to the systems we currently have. I will admit to you guys, as someone who majored in political science and been involved in politics since I was 18 years old, we are definitely in an era of flux. We're in an era of change. Both parties don't know what exactly their constituencies are because things are changing and your generation has had a lot of change in your lifetime. No one understands social media like you guys do, not even me who's 30 years old. No one understands the kind of woes that you're facing as young people as you face the barrel of, do I go to college or not? Do I pursue a certain career I love or a career that pays more money? Where will I live? Will I live with my parents forever or will I rent a home? Will I buy a home? And what I want to share with you guys, I think because you ate during the audience for Mesa today, is your voice matters more than ever. Your opinions dictate our policy and I hope you use this opportunity to really use your voice and really advocate for a better society because we can't leave this country. This country is our home. So we're either going to step up and make it better for our future or we're going to sit by and watch how things unfold. So I hope you guys make the bold step and use your voice. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, and welcome, students. I hope you're having fun. It's going to be a pretty short meeting, I think, so you picked a good one. So yes, Art Venture, a number of things I want to cover quickly and then I'll get to some stuff at the end. Art Venture, absolutely. Thank you to the artists. Thank you to the staff. I think it's better than ever this year. There's an award ceremony on Saturday. I've got another commitment, but I hope that everybody in the public goes and enjoys that. It's a beautiful event and it's, I believe it's at Akma, so, but you can look it up. And so I always had the thing called the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. They have it annually. It's quite, quite an event. There's like 700 people there. And our Costa Mesa resident, John Morlock, who's our former senator, is the emcee. And this year, Rob Palenka, the general manager of the Los Angeles Lakers, was the keynote. And every, every mayor gets an opportunity to say a little something about their city. And this year, the call to the question, the prompt was, if you had a basketball team, what would be the name of your city's basketball team? And so I got, I made a little, some remarks and I said, we'd be the Saints because the, like, like the Saints that we, that we pray to in the Holy Catholic Church, we do so much good and so many people step up for the community. And I got a little out of control and I had 700 people singing "When the Saints Come Marching In" at the end of my remarks. As Manuel said, we were at, or Councilmember, sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Chavez, we were at the Families Forward Gala and one of the honorees at the, at the gala was Clay Val. Clay Val is a very important business to the City of Costa Mesa. It's on the corner of Placentia and 17th. It's an amazing business and they have, during, they've been contributing to Families Forward for 25 years, but during a very critical time of the pandemic alone, they contributed $600,000 and that helps people get into housing and get the food that they need to make it through a tough time. I got a briefing within the last week from Nate Robbins. Nate Robbins is the manager of our homeless outreach effort and he oversees the Rides Shelter and so many other programs, the Rent Relief Program. And he's really, in my opinion, a shining star on staff. And he gave a presentation. He's going to do a town hall. We're going to do a town hall. Everybody's invited and it's going to be, I believe the date is October 15th, so put that on your calendar. Sergio's saying, yes, it's October 15th. It's going to be at the, it's going to be at Norma Herzog, Norma Herzog Center. And it's going to be at, what, 6 o'clock? 6 o'clock? Anyway, wait till you hear how much great work we're doing regarding homelessness and helping people that are vulnerable in our community. I think you'll be very impressed. Okay. So, yes, thank you for the kind words, Councilmember Bule. I do try to make sure that everybody gets an opportunity to be heard. It's an important principle of mine to let people be heard. It's part of our constitution, the First Amendment, which I feel very strongly about. And whether I agree with you or not, I don't always agree with you and you don't always agree with me, but it's important, I think, that everybody gets a chance to have their say and have it without being disturbed or disrupted or interrupted. So thanks for noticing. That's great. It was nice of you to do that. As for Charlie Kirk, yes, Councilmember Pettis, for sure. We will definitely adjourn the meeting on his behalf. His death was tragic. It's as simple as that. You know, you don't have to agree with what the man says, as I said before. That doesn't matter. He's a child of God. He's a, was, and a father and a husband and he didn't deserve to go out that way. And, and then the guy who, you know, pray for mercy for the person, the guy who killed him, I mean, that person's life is ruined too. It's terrible. Violence is terrible. Anyhow, speaking of which, thank you for indulging us. We have a new process where you have to come through and get, go through a metal detector and these metal detectors, you talk, thank you to the PD for doing it so quickly. It's, as the city clerk says, it's long overdue. You have to go through metal detectors to get into Santa Ana chambers, the Anaheim chambers, the fairgrounds, the Orange County chambers, the Orange County Board of Supervisors chambers. And now the City of Costa Mesa, it was prompted and precipitated by the events that we've all talked about and also some correspondence that we received over the weekend. So thank you for getting on it. Thank you for Brenda Green, our city clerk and her staff, and our city manager, Cecilia Gallardo-Daly, for helping out too. But I also have to call out, these particular metal detectors were obtained yesterday and borrowed from the Performing Arts Center. So that's a major deal. I called up Casey Ritz, who handles the Performing Arts Center, and I said, Casey, can you help us out? And he got, within a half an hour, he was working with Chief La Pointe and we had these metal detectors. So thank you to the Performing Arts Center. It just shows the level of collaboration we have from the city and of course, it's reciprocal and the, and our arts community. So thank you to everybody. And it's just something to deal with. One last thing, I, when I was going through this, I was thinking about my mother. My mother had, she, she died in '22, but she had nine grandchildren and she had 11 great grandchildren. And she would always say to them, honey, you can come in the living room, but your cookie can't come in the living room. And so I say to you, you can come in the chambers, but your weapon can't come in the chambers. So with that, let's hear from our city attorney, sorry, city manager, Cecilia Gallardo-Daly.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. September is National Preparedness Month. Because of that, I'd like to remind the public that safety is one of our top priorities here in the city. The theme for National Preparedness Month is Preparedness Starts at Home. Preparedness has four key steps. Know your risk. Make a family preparedness plan or emergency plan. Build an emergency supply kit. And get involved in your community by taking action to prepare for emergencies. As part of Costa Mesa's efforts to get prepared, we have a Emergency Preparedness Guide that we are releasing. Copies are available at the back of the room. We have our Emergency Preparedness Manager, Delsey Hines, here. And if anyone in the chambers is interested in receiving a copy, they can go just outside the chambers, get a copy and ask Delsey any questions. And the mayor and council have copies here at the dais as well. The guide provides detailed information to our community on how to put together an emergency kit, safely store water, understand utilities, create a family plan, understand our local hazards, and provides details on what actions to take during a variety of emergency situations. The guide's available in English and is currently being translated to Spanish and should be available next week. The Emergency Preparedness Guide can also be found on the city's website at our Office of Emergency Management page. The guide is also available at any of our city buildings, so please stop by and pick up a copy or check it out on our, on our website. And thank you again to Delsey and our city graphics team for the creation of this important resource. Our Emergency Preparedness Team will also be sharing preparedness information and resources with the community on Wednesday, September 24th at 9:00 a.m. at the John Wayne Airport Emergency Preparedness and Safety Fair. And finally, just a reminder, Costa Mesa will participate in the Orange County Alert OC Regional Test tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. Residents who have registered their cellular phone at alertoc.com should expect a text or voice test message on that tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. City, sorry, City Attorney Barlow, Hall Barlow, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'll just take a moment. First, I want to wish a happy Hispanic Heritage Month to all my colleagues, my son-in-law and my beautiful, amazing, stunning granddaughter who just rocks my world. And finally, I, this is going to sound like a silly request, but I just learned that my favorite horse whisperer and Sundance Kid died today. And for those of you kids who don't know who I'm talking about, Google it.
I know who it is.
Robert Redford died today and one of my personal heroes and probably my very first crush. And so I won't ask you to end the meeting in his memory, but I think it would be nice if we honored him that way, too. Thank you. That's all I have tonight.
All right. Yes. Okay. So now we're up to the consent calendar. All items under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be voted on in one vote unless they're pulled by a member of the public or the staff or a council member. And in this case, Councilmember Bule pulled item number six. And so with respect to the balance, could I get a vote, sorry, a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Chavez, seconded by me. All in favor. I guess we have to do a voice vote.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Pettis?
Yes.
Councilmember Bule?
Yes.
Councilmember Gamarros?
Yes.
Councilmember Mar?
Yes.
Councilmember Mar?
Councilmember Mar, we got to do a voice vote on the consent calendar.
Yes. Can you guys not hear me?
No, no. Got it that time.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Mayor Pro Tem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
Okay, good. And then Councilmember Bule, you pulled number six. Do you, why don't we give you the floor and you can run this part? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and staff. Yeah, this is one of those ones where, you know, as newly elected and you guys took me through the budgeting process, so I think I'll be equipped to address that next time around. And then when I saw this adopt legislative platform, it seemed like a relatively important document. And I saw it on the consent calendar. And I guess my first question, and this is partly informational, I may know some of the answers to this, but sometimes I think it's not only educational for me, but for those, those few who may be checking in, watching this council session tonight. But when we go through consent calendar, if I had not pulled it, it would effectively be deemed as though a unanimous vote passed this particular item. Is that a generally accurate statement?
I'm sorry, if it didn't go through the consent calendar?
If I hadn't pulled it and it was just grouped in with the rest, we just, it's considered typically a formality. We're all, there's nothing controversial in here and we're voting for it and moving it through.
Sometimes it's just simply because the council's already considered it. I think that's the case with this particular one.
Okay.
Also, one, one thing I just want to say for everybody is, and it's just a good reminder for all the council members, is you, you're welcome to pull an item, but you're also welcome to register a no vote and then we move forward.
Oh, that-
If that's what you wanted.
Yeah, that would have been helpful. But since we pulled it, I'll ask a couple of my questions that will illuminate. Again, part of my education in preparing myself going forward. This, I, I sense from this document that it, it kind of is the roadmap where council gets to convey to staff what our constituents and where the city comes on certain policies and what things that they want us to pursue and not pursue. Is that a generally fair statement on what this document does?
Yes, correct. It's kind of like a strategic plan, letting us know your priorities and the community's priorities.
Right. And then, so if in this plan, we make environmental issues and pushing for EV things and stuff like that, a top priority, staff then now knows to keep your eye out for funding opportunities and legislative actions and things along those lines, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And so I see this document as being akin to me, now that I've been on council for a little while. Council has very few points where we get to actually express public's concerns and public's desires on certain things. And so I see this as one document, correct?
Yes, yes, yes.
And another document where we get to get involved and, and put our priorities and implement or direct staff on our policies is the budget. Obviously, we say, here's the money, here's how we want it to be spent. Then we turn it over to staff and you guys move forward and implement, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. So that's why, you know, when I saw this in the consent calendar, this is one of those few rare, important documents and it gets passed through the consent calendar. And I appreciate the comment that I heard that we had had an opportunity to give our input or not. New council member, not so much. Am I correct in going through this document, what we had was a red line version attached?
Yes, a red line to the, because we had come in May 20th with a version and then the red line is the changes made since May 20th.
Okay. And my, so that, that right there was a clarification for me. I was under, apparently the misimpression, or you can correct me, that the non-red line were pre-existing from previous council and the red line was. So was this a completely newly generated document based on input from the current council?
Yes, this was a new document. The city council hadn't had a legislative platform. I was hired two years ago to kind of create this document.
Okay. And here's where I may have missed something. You know, as I was reading through the staff agenda report, my recollection is we had a study session and we had quite a extensive presentation on some of the statutory issues facing the state impacting the city or whatnot. And am I mistaken on that? The presentation that we had with the state lobbyists, for lack of a better term?
Yeah, it wasn't a study session, though. It was a regular city council meeting on May 20th, but correct. It was, that was the presentation.
And for me, that felt a little bit like taking a sip of water out of a fire hydrant. We were hearing about all kinds of different policies and procedures and all these wonderful things that are happening up in Sacramento and things we should agree with and get behind. And, and that's just me because maybe I'm the new guy. And as I was reading through this, and I won't belabor this because I'm cognizant of our time and stuff, but there were some issues in there. One particular issue that I saw, I'll just jump to one of them and there's several. I'll just jump to one of them, and there's several that I would have probably liked a little, had I been more prepared at that session, I probably would have had more questions and more input. Now, being more familiar with the importance of this document and the impact it has on directing staff on where to spend their time and where to spend their resources and on things that are going to affect the city. But on a diversity stabilized and on page four, I noticed, let's say, paragraph two, paragraph five, as I interpreted those, you know, and it's kind of a pivot off what I heard Mayor Stevens mention in his comments. Keep an eye out and we want to pursue funding opportunities and things to assist the homeless and to work on our homeless infrastructure. Is that generally what two and four, or two and five say?
Yes, just to clarify, you're looking at the platform?
Yes, I apologize.
Yes, items two and four. Yes, item is two, I take to kind of support, you know, policies, incentives. Again, these could be legislation. It could be grant. It could be funding requests for affordable housing. And then four really speaks to kind of fire, life safety codes. So, yeah. Oh, sorry, you said five. Oh, five, yes, the home grants and CCG.
And so we're keeping an eye out for those grants. And just, and I haven't come down on a decision on this one. Although I'm still looking to get into another discussion with Nate. I agree with Mayor Stevens. I think he's doing a wonderful job. 10,000-foot comment. It seems that at some point, maybe Costa Mesa is becoming a victim of its own success. We're so good, in my humble opinion, at our outreach and providing services. At some point, I would, and it's, yeah, I guess it's a possible concern I have with this language in two and five. At some point, I'd want us to have some metrics in place and start, I mean, just the fact that we can locate money and continue to grow our homeless services or whatever. At some point, are we kind of there? Have we shouldered our burden for the county? Have we shouldered our burden for our surrounding cities? And I'd like a policy that isn't simply, if there's funds out there for this particular need, do we just go for it because the funds are there? Or do we weigh, are we there now? Are we, and that's probably for another time, for another discussion. We're here at the end of this, but go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, I appreciate that feedback. And that's the kind of feedback we like. And this isn't a, you know, the end of the document. It's intended to be a living policy. So my intent is, you know, we come back probably in January before the legislative session kicks off with kind of a preview of the year. At that time, if we, you know, learn of some new priority that the governor or legislators or the president is advancing and you have feedback and we all feel that that needs to be an amended portion of the platform that's so important, we can do that. So this is intended to be kind of a growing and living document.
Okay. And I appreciate that. And another area I looked at under page five of this attachment, advanced environmental sustainability and climate resiliency. And I'm not going to belabor and go through one, two, three, four things where we're keeping an eye out for funding that will help us to transition to clean and renewable. And we'll look for funding and keep an eye out for streamlining clean energy infrastructure, permitting, and all that's well and good. But one thing I did notice in all five of those, do we weigh that versus the budgetary impact? Is it grants that are fully funded, so it costs us nothing? Or is it one of those, we'll give you a taste, we'll give you guys a million and get you started, and now we're saddled with additional funding? So if I were to have drilled down on this document, I would have wanted some qualifiers or things in there. So it looks like you wanted to say something.
I can go ahead and add a little bit more color to this discussion. When we do go after grants, we do take all those questions that you have brought up forward and we work very closely with our departments that it's going to impact. We also work with our finance department. And we also look into whether there is going to be a city match. What is that amount? Is it in our budget? So there's other, there's a lot of criterias that we consider before we go after any grant funding. We also have the opportunity of direct appropriations via the state or federal government. Those are a different process. This is kind of the money that we've been lucky to secure and now we have the money that we are now allocating to capital projects when it comes to the parks, parks facilities. But when it comes to grants that we, they're competitive grants, there is a robust process that we go through and it involves a lot of departments. So it's not just going after the dollars. Number one, we have to see if we have the resources. We usually look at our capital improvement schedule to see if we have enough resources to actually take on additional projects. Or we also look at our inventory of projects and see if any of the grants descriptions fit some of our existing projects that we are in need of funding. So there is a process and we can meet with you and kind of go over that in further detail to help you understand.
You jumped to, at some point, my little soliloquy here. I was going to comment on one-on-one time. But you also just kind of confirmed a point for me. If, yeah, it sounds like a laborious, kind of drawn-out, detailed process. And if our policy statement, for lack of a better term, says devote that kind of time to these types of activities, we just put you down that path to spend a lot of time on it. So when we are creating this, are we sure that's where this, and maybe this council does, wants a lot of time spent on those types of things? I was just not as engaged and as well-informed at the time this was first presented to me. And that's why I'm asking these questions tonight. And I guess I'll, I'll end, well, not end on this. One thing I think I would like, next time we start this process, is prior to scheduling the public hearing on this, I don't know if it's realistic to ask you guys to meet with each council member. I know how difficult it is, not only to make time or even for myself to make time, but it would be much more beneficial for me if I had a little one-on-one time in advance. Because literally, when we went through that, I was, you know, I was overwhelmed. And I like to, I like to be informed when I'm voting up and down on things. And I'll end on this. So what's before us tonight? This is to approve, this is our policy for the biannual?
Yes.
Okay. And Commissioner Martinez's commentary. I'm guessing it's biannually to coincide with elections?
To coincide with the legislative session.
Okay.
Which, yes.
Okay. Well, for my selfish purposes, if the makeup of the dais or whatever, to change every two years, they'd have an opportunity to be the voice of the people that constituted the current dais and they'd have a say in this policy document.
Correct, correct. And like I said, at any time, if, like I said, we intend to come to you with, you know, periodic legislative reports, updates, the state budget, the federal budget, if something were to arise to the level we said, oh, that's a critical issue, we could include that in the platform at that time or make a note that when we update it, make sure you include that next time.
Okay. Those are my questions. My last comment is, some of the high school students who are here today, hopefully you got something out of that and it wasn't just me getting something out of that tonight. Thank you.
Real quick, John?
Yes, of course. Councilmember Pettis, you have the floor.
Just, I'll keep this brief, though. But to answer your question, Mike, that we did, we did agree to meet on this again. I'm not, one thing, I'm not sure, well, I can make fun of my friend Arliss because she's not sitting here right now and she can't get mad at me, but I'm saying this with love. I remember she was taking copious notes and I know I can gauge how long we're going to go usually by how many notes Arliss is taking. But so we agreed, we agreed to talk about this again. I'm not sure, I don't want to, I'm not trying to make any accusations, but we definitely agreed to meet again on this, Mike. And one thing I want to caution about on these issues is, I've been thinking a lot, and I was paying attention when I first got elected, to the culture of things and how it works. And if you weren't a person in the know and you were to take a quick look at the document and you said, okay, what is the changes? What are the two issues you see in red that are glaring to you? And it's almost all environmental and it's almost all safe streets. So it might make one wonder how this process is being influenced, what voices are being heard, which ones aren't. And I'm not saying that's the case, but we want to make sure we have the perception that we're doing this the right way. And I look forward to being a part of the process going forward. Like you said, it's a living document. So that helps me and I appreciate that. So thank you.
Okay. I got a question. Can you, this is always, we've met about this and I remember we talked about this when we had our individual meeting of the Legislative Committee, which consists of the city manager and Mayor Protem and the mayor. But on page two, item 11, I think it might exist other places. We have this change where we, and it's just, you know, just in terms of language, it just kills me. We changed the term "at risk" to "at promise," right? I mean, why don't we just have it be "at risk"? I don't have the first clue what "at promise" means. And it just seems like it's just some, like, just weird, politically correct, you know, linguistically bizarre change. Is there any reason we can't just say "at risk"?
It's perfectly fine. We can make that change.
Okay. Because that's one thing that, I mean, that's good. Okay, we need to hear from the public, but when we do make a motion, I intend to incorporate that in. Okay, so let's hear from the public on this. You have the floor.
Thank you, Councilmember Beulie, for digging into this. I'm glad that since you became a council member, there's been no second readings in the consent calendar. That was something that they used to do prior to this new council meeting set, where they would just not have public hearings. They would actually put second readings in the consent calendar, so they wouldn't have to revisit items. I think the funding for the, funding for the immigration defense fund probably falls under that. I would be curious to the, to the attorney's opinion on that, being that this was the first time during the last meeting that it was actually observed that Costa Mesa would be funding a, lawyers for people that were facing deportation. Anyways, again, a good catch. This was a wonderful reading. There are a bunch of students in the audience. Students, you need to understand that climate change is fake. I'm speaking to you. You have a bunch of liberal teachers. I used to be a teacher and I saw this firsthand. You have a bunch of teachers that try to make you think. Well, actually, they don't try to make you think. They brainwash you. And it's very easy to understand what's actually going on. Climate change is fake. And the easiest way to prove that it's fake is look at Jupiter's Red Storm and see that the size of that storm is changing. Now, if it was, climate change is real and our CO2 emissions from cars was dangerous for the world, then the only planet in our solar system that would be changing would be Earth. But that's not the case. And it's all through our solar system are changing. So if you are a student out there and you bought into climate change is real, ah, you've, you've been lied to. And you need to actually push back on what adults in charge tell you because they are actually, adults in charge, some little inside information, don't know what's going on. You need to realize that, again, climate change is fake. And again, Councilmember Beulie, wonderful catch on this because this actually is a big deal. I embarrass myself I miss this. And finally, to the students, those of you who have any understanding about math, you'll probably see about five, six, seven people talking about city business in a population of 115,000. So do your math and understand how few people are involved. And if you're...
Okay, thanks. Anybody else? Closed public comment. All right.
I'll make the motion.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll move to approve the staff recommendation.
All right. We'd be willing to add that we changed it back to "at risk" and not "at promise."
Sure.
Okay. I'll second. All right. Do you have any comments, councilmember?
Yeah, just in terms of process. I mean, as I recall, we brought this in May and I think none of us felt like we'd been able to provide sufficient input and that there might be other things that we wanted to include. And that was why we painted it a little bit so that, you know, councilmembers could feel free to add to that legislative agenda. I do want to say, if folks didn't feel like they got, you know, time for that input or that it was a little confusing at the time, I'm certainly happy to punt this a little bit longer, given that really, we're kind of late for the current legislative session and this is in preparation for the following one. But I think that's what Arliss and I were trying to accomplish in the last time when we pushed it out a little bit. So anyway, just putting that out there, if that's where the council wants to go. But otherwise, I'm glad we've got something in writing because I think we've been probably winging it a little bit for far too long. So good to have at least some documentation about the direction we're headed.
Thanks. I support that. Okay, let's, if there are no other comments, let's call for the question. Oh, glad I got to do it by voice vote.
Councilmember Beulie? Councilmember Gamaros?
Yes.
Councilmember Marr?
Yes.
Councilmember Pettis?
No.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-2 with councilmembers Beulie and Pettis voting no.
Okay. So now we're moving on to our regular calendar. Got through, all the way through the consent calendars. That's a lot of paper. Get to turn it over. And we're at public hearing number one. Madam Curly, would you please read the title?
Thank you. This is introduction and first reading of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Costa Mesa, California, Amending Chapters 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 9, 10, and 11 of Title 13 Regarding Planning, Zoning, and Development of the Costa Mesa Municipal Code, Planning, Zoning, and Development to Provide Technical Updates and Clarifications, and also a Resolution to Update the Procedure for Determining Shared Parking Requirements and Finding of Exemption Under the California Environmental Quality Act." Staff presentation by Ms. Curley and Mr. Foyling, Assistant Planners, and Mr. Inlos, Economic Development Manager, Administrator.
Ms. Curley and, Mr. Garcia, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Assistant Planner Foylan Garcia, joined this evening by Assistant Planner Caitlin Curley and Economic Development Administrator Daniel Inlos. Together, we will be presenting this zoning code amendment. To provide some background, this zoning code amendment includes technical updates To provide some background, this zoning code amendment includes technical updates intended to ensure compliance with state law, codify zoning administrative determinations, and incorporate existing city policies, such as those related to walls, fences, and landscape standards, while making minor clarifications. Zoning administrator, zoning code amendments and technical updates are important, are an important part of good planning practice. Zoning administrative determinations, which are internal procedures approved by the zoning administrator, provide interpretations and guidelines to resolve ambiguities in the zoning code, in the code and address unique land uses. These determinations are tools, staff, are tools that staff rely on daily while reviewing projects. For example, one determination establishes placement and screening requirements for ground-mounted mechanical equipment, such as air conditioning units. By codifying these requirements, both staff and applicants benefit from consistency and clarity. The following items in this update include: the incorporation of external wall and fences policies into the zoning code; the addition of policies and regulations regarding individual and group counseling uses; standards for the location and screening of pipes and conduits; standards for the screening of cell site equipment; and the codification of Senate Bill 9 ordinance with minor clarifications to ensure compliance with state law. This update also includes updates to the 2025 ADU ordinance to maintain consistency with state law; update the definition of contiguous to provide additional clarity regarding window signage, window signage placement; the codification that mechanical equipment area shall not be counted towards parking requirements; the clarification of the placement of ground-mounted mechanical equipment adjacent to residential properties; and incorporating updates to comply with state law; the establishment of clear setback requirements for raised decks in residential zones. My colleague Caitlin will now present the rest of the items.
Thank you, Foylan. Amendment number 11 consists of updating the city's procedure for determining shared parking requirements. The zoning code requires new developments, major remodels, and new tenants to provide a minimum number of parking spaces based on the specific use of the property. However, for mixed-use developments, the zoning code requires the application of the City of Costa Mesa Procedure for Determining Shared Parking to calculate the required parking for the development. Mixed-use developments include developments with a mix of commercial and industrial and resident and/or residential uses. The current shared parking table was approved in 1985. However, development patterns, tenant uses, and driving trends have changed over the past 40 years, which makes updating this table to reflect modern parking demand essential. The zoning code allows updates to the shared parking table by resolution of the City Council. This amendment updates the shared parking table to modify the hourly adjustments to reflect current parking demand for each use, diversifies the existing uses, and adds new uses based on modern trends. For these updates, staff used the most currently, the most current industry standard sources, which are the Urban Land Institute's Shared Parking Third Edition and the Institute of Transportation Engineers Parking Generation Sixth Edition. The ITE source obtains data from site-specific case studies, while the ULI obtains their data from other empirical sources. The data for the 14 original uses were updated and new data was provided for some additional uses, with the total number of uses proposed on this updated table being 26 use categories. A revised version of Attachment 3 was provided prior to the hearing with a updated adjustments for the Proposed Shared Parking Requirements Table. This is the document that was recommended to approve by the Planning Commission. On June 23rd, the Planning Commission conducted a study session regarding these zoning code amendments, and on July 25th, they recommended approval of Amendments 1 through 10, with Amendment Number 11 being continued to a date certain. That amendment was recommended for approval on August 25th by the Planning Commission. The proposed updates are in conformance with the city's general plan, including Policies LU 3.10, LU 6.2, LU 6.7, and LU 6.19, which together promote a productive use of space, the conservation of land resources, and an allowance of additional tenants in mixed-use developments. In conclusion, the Planning Commission recommends that the City Council find that the project is exempt from the provisions of SEQA pursuant to pursuant to SEQA Guidelines, Section 15061B3, give first reading to the ordinance approving code amendment PCTY-21-001, amending Title 13 of the Costa Mesa Municipal Code pertaining to minor technical updates, and adopt a resolution updating the City of Costa Mesa Procedure for Determining Shared Parking Requirements. Thank you. Staff is available at this, for questions at this time.
Questions, council? I don't see anybody rushing to ask any questions. I've, I've got questions, so, I just, a little bit of questions, so. I mean, so, can, can you just tell me, or whoever, tell me, like, how did you come about gathering these, like, lists of, or this whole list of changes that need to be made? I mean, how did it all bubble up so you knew what to, what to change and what to keep the same?
Thank you for your question, Mr. Mayor. Staff keeps a running list of items that should be updated periodically. This is the first of future code amendments, where we've taken a stab at that list and tried to get some of it done. We've, we've narrowed it down, though, to keep it bite-sized to these 11 items.
Good. All right. I appreciate that. Well, I think, I mean, I, and I'm just gonna, I'm gonna do it in a form of a question, okay? So, I've heard from a lot, like, for example, I don't think they'd mind me sharing this. I had lunch with the whole Sadegi Group, you know, the LAB Group. And they had a lot of suggestions about things. For example, they said, you know, if you go through and you see what's allowed and what's not allowed, there's some businesses that don't even exist anymore, that they're completely anachronistic, and then there's some other businesses that have emerged since the code's been adopted. And so they asked if we could do a look at the, at the code for things like that. So businesses that are allowed in certain zones and, and things of that nature. And so it just struck me, it's like, do you guys think that would be a good idea to, to talk with people like, you know, stakeholders, like the LAB Inc. and, and other business owners and so forth, to see, what, what do they want to see in, in, in the zoning codes, right? And then do, take another bite at the elephant in six months or however long it takes us to gather that information?
Absolutely. We do that currently. So, as we work with applicants through the planning application process, or as we meet with property owners, tenant owners, businesses throughout the, all the processes that we take businesses through, business license, planning applications, plan check process, we collect the feedback that they provide to us, and we put all of those notes and comments and examples in our update kind of log. And then, as we will progress forward through technical code cleanups in the future, we'll take bite-size after bite-size of those to kind of bring them to Planning Commission, then eventually to you to adopt.
Wendy, I know we're just barely biting this and we're about ready to digest it, but when do you suppose we're gonna be able to do the next bite?
Mayor, members of the City Council, I'm happy to address that. Actually, as recently as July, we took a list of about 100-plus different items for a study session with the Planning Commission to discuss prioritization of certain categories. And so, in, we will be interspersing these types of zoning code updates along with a lot of the strategic housing initiatives that Development Services is responsible for, but we will be interspersing among rezoning and Fairview Developmental Center of Specific Plan Housing Element Implementation. We will intersperse more technical code cleanups and also zoning ordinance updates to incorporate modern uses and modern development standards into the zoning ordinance. So you should start seeing several of these annually. And then, in our discussion with the Planning Commission, there was a certain direction for prioritization based on resources. So we'll be working on grouping thematic categories of like nature, so that we can present them all at the same time.
And then, one last question. How do we, what's our methodology for soliciting feedback from business owners, property owners, to make sure that our list of code, potential code amendments is comprehensive?
Sure. So as Economic Development Administrator Inlos indicated, our list was actually compiled from our everyday dealings with people over the counter, so property owners, business owners, developers. Anytime we encounter an area in the zoning ordinance that we identify as needing updating, we inventory it. And that way, we have an ongoing tracking system to, to keep, keep all of that on the list to update.
Okay. But what about like a call for, because what you're describing is, just in the everyday thing, we just make our notes and we jot things down, the feedback we get, which is good. But what about like, some type of call to the, to the business community to say, hey, we're, we're doing this, just to make sure everybody gets that opportunity to be heard?
Sure. So once we progress beyond any cleaning up ambiguities and, and technical needs, zoning ordinance updates will be accompanied by, you know, it's stakeholder outreach is what I like to call it, or community outreach. We would send out communications to businesses and solicit input on, on particular, particular items. You know, let's say it's an update to the, to the signage code, for example. We would do a, a call to get input from business community to see what is, what are effective forms of signage that they're looking to accommodate that currently our zoning ordinance is not able to accommodate.
Okay. And as we go about our work as councilmembers, meeting with constituents and having these lunches that I described, should, who should, when, when, when we have those, should we direct the constituents to you, to you, Ms. Ty, or who should we direct the constituents to?
Yeah, absolutely, Mayor. The department, so Economic Development Administrator, or the director. In fact, the party you mentioned, we have subsequently already met with them to gather input.
Good, good. Well, that's great. Yeah. But I mean, there's probably a lot, probably a lot of other similarly situated people out there. Okay. Good, I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you for all you're doing. Thank you for the presentation. It was excellent. Let's hear from the public. Any public comments on this item? Okay, I don't see anybody coming up in the chambers. Anybody on Zoom?
Yes, phone number, Deanan, 613, please.
613, you have the floor.
Yes, hi. I tried to make comments about zoning changes during the Planning Commission meeting, but much like the council meetings and multiple official meetings, my hand raise was ignored. I was concerned with open space. So, let's talk about how absurd open space is in Costa Mesa. If you go to Brickyard West on Central Avenue, that property project is considered 80% open because what they've done is they've created a loophole where patios are considered open space. My public comment was not allowed to be made. It was ignored, you know, and I've been able to learn multiple times. I'm actually pursuing a investigation here about why I don't get to speak during public comments. But anyways, open space should be considered on the ground. And when you call patios at the top of a building, open space, you call patios outside a window, open space, you're just, you're fluffing the numbers. It's absolute, you know, BS. Parking regulations are underparked. We have a councilmember, Reynolds, who thinks that because she's involved with some, how do you say, fairy tale feature where people don't drive cars to work, no one will drive cars in the future. That's super unrealistic, and that's why projects will be underparked. Random parking is a farce. If you build a project, you should be able to park in the garage, in the driveway, and on the street. The regulations that we are considering are way underparked. Everything that is coming downstream from this council is terrible, and it's gonna be a total detriment to the, the stakeholders in the city. For those students who are sitting in the audience, I want you to understand something and think about this. You can pay $2,400 a month for a one-bedroom apartment, or you can pay $2,400 a month to own a house, four-bedroom through a bathhouse. What sounds better to you? Something that you put money into every month and you get equity out of, and when you sell it, you get money back? Or something you put money into and you have nothing to show for it when the rent goes up? When you have a mortgage, your payment never goes up. The Democrat Party in California and the United States are trying to keep people in California. California is built out. You know, you have to understand, not everyone wins, not everyone gets a dividend, and not everyone makes a football team. Not everyone makes a basketball team, not everyone makes a baseball team, not everyone makes the, I don't know, what do you call a ban? Not everyone makes
All right, that's your time. Next.
No further speakers, Mr.
All right, closed public comment. Let's get a motion on the table here.
I'll move to approve staff recommendation.
Motion by Mayor Protem Chavez. Anybody want to second that? All right. Oh, second by Councilmember Marr. Okay. Do you want to speak to your motion?
Briefly, this has gone through Planning Commission, and I know they vetted this thoroughly. And it, to me, it seems like just updating some few things for our businesses to be more efficient. So, let's do it.
All right. Anything from the second?
Anything add?
Pardon me, Mr. Mayor. Would you mind clarifying in your motion that you are also recommending the revised document, the revised, revised Attachment 3?
Yes.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. Let's take a voice vote on this one.
Councilmember Marr?
Yes.
Councilmember Gamaros?
Yes.
Councilmember Bealie?
Yes.
Councilmember Pettis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
All right, thank you very much. Great job, and thank you for all your thoughtful answers to my questions. Okay, so moving on to old business item number one. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title?
Thank you. This is an ordinance, adoption of an ordinance titled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Costa Mesa, California, adding Chapter 16, Prohibition on Seller Distribution of Nitrous Oxide, to Title 11, Offenses Miscellaneous of the Costa Mesa Municipal Code, to establish regulations prohibiting the unlawful seller distribution of nitrous oxide in the city."
All right. Captain Shamnis, please.
Okay, and this is the one that we passed, I think, 7-0, right? So, brevity is the order, order of the day, captain, or, can I say deputy chief?
Well, I guess you could.
Oh, okay.
But I have four and a half days left to enjoy being a captain. I'm going to enjoy every minute of it.
Okay. Well, don't, don't let your, don't let your presentation cut into your enjoyment.
Well, good evening, councilmembers, and Mayor Stevens. And I will make this very brief, and therefore I wrote it down, so I didn't get long-winded. At the September 2nd council meeting, staff presented and proposed a new ordinance which makes it unlawful for any person to sell, attempt to sell, offer, distribute, or otherwise provide to any person nitrous oxide, a device to dispense or administer nitrous oxide, or any device that contains any quantity of nitrous oxide. During that meeting, City Council voted 7 to 0 to move the ordinance forward with no amendments. Tonight, staff recommends the City Council adopt an ordinance adding Chapter 16 to Title 11 of the Costa Mesa Municipal Code to establish regulations prohibiting the unlawful sale or distribution of nitrous oxide in the city. This concludes my presentation, and I am available for any questions.
Any questions? Hear from the, let's hear from the public. Anybody wish to speak on this item? Anybody on Zoom?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, closed public comment. Let's do a voice vote.
Motion and second, please.
Oh, sorry, motion. We got a, right, motion, sorry, motion by Councilmember Chavez, seconded by, seconded by Gamaros. I heard him first. Okay. So, do you wish to be heard, councilmember?
Look, it's, it's to keep kids safe from dangerous drugs. What's not likely, not like with the motion?
All right. How about second? Second's good. Let's call for the question.
Councilmember Bealie?
Yes.
Councilmember Gamaros?
Yes.
Councilmember Marr?
Yes.
Councilmember Pettis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
All right. Thank you very much for your brief presentation. And so we're, we're going, we're going down to new business item number one.
This is resolution for exception to the 180-day wait period pursuant to Government Code Sections 7522.56 and 21224 for the rehire of Battalion Chief William Kershaw. Presentation by Ms. Lee, Human Resources Manager.
Ms. Lee, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Tonight, we bring forth the exception to the 180-day wait period for the rehire of Battalion Chief William Kershaw. Battalion Chief William Kershaw retired from the City of Costa Mesa on September 9th, 2025, after a very impressive 37 years of service. Mr. Kershaw possesses extensive experience and institutional knowledge, and his continued services are necessary due to the critical and immediate needs for project support in the and immediate needs for project support in the city's fire and rescue department. Section 7522.56 of the California Government Code requires that post-retirement employment commence no earlier than 180 days after the retirement date. A public agency may hire a retired annuitant prior to the expiration of the 180 days if the appointment is necessary to fill a critically needed position. A recruitment to fill the battalion chief position was conducted, and the position will be filled in September. Continued services are imperative for project support at the management level, including the CAT RMS system integration and updates, including the recent changes to the National Fire Incident Reporting System and National Emergency Response Information System, fire and rescue departments accreditation process with the Center for Public Safety Excellence Commission on Fire Accreditation International, assistance with the radio frequency templates and programming support, and assistance with the Emergency Communications Center transition and integration in collaboration with the CNPD. Today, we're asking for council to adopt a resolution granting an exception to the 180-day wait period pursuant to Government Code Sections 7522.56 and 21224. This item supports the City Council's plan goal to recruit and retain high-quality employees, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Lee? No?
No.
Okay. In that case, oh, sorry, go ahead, Councilmember Beulie.
I'm just curious. It says recruitment to fill the battalion chief position was conducted, and position will be filled in September. Am I to follow that this is just a temporary rehire?
This is a temporary rehire for retired annuitant, yes.
Yeah, okay. Well, that was always just, it was odd that we're hiring somebody in September, and we're bringing him back on. So, they thought it was out, and they're pulling me back in. Okay, that's all I had.
Councilmember Marr?
I have a similar question. So, can we be clear? How many days do we expect to bring the annuitant back for?
We usually do it on a case-by-case basis for this particular appointment, and Chief Stefano might be able to add to this, but the intent is likely no longer than one fiscal year.
Oh, okay. So, wait, are we hiring, are we promoting a battalion chief in 2026?
Yes, we will be filling his vacancy this month. I believe the chief has not made an announcement yet as to the next election, but we will be, his, Chief Kershaw's assistance is still required on a temporary basis. CalPERS does limit it to no more than 960 hours in a fiscal year.
Okay, so we're talking about two different things. So, one is backfilling the current open battalion chief position, and then the second is this kind of more administrative position administering CAT RMS and changes there to that system for the next year. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. And why, I mean, this is probably a question for the chief. Why bring back a retiree as opposed to promoting somebody else from within to serve in that role?
Chief?
Mayor Stevens, members of the council, it's great to be here this evening. Congratulations, City Manager. It's exciting. On this specific issue, Chief Kershaw, after 37 years, has a great deal of institutional knowledge. We had a promotional process, so his position's going to be filled, and part of the retired annuitant status is you cannot bring someone back to just refill the position. So, that position's going to be filled. We had a vacancy and another retirement in the battalion chiefs group just a few months ago with Chief Coats, and we've got a fire marshal in our chief officer group who is leaving. So, we have a significant amount of loss of institutional knowledge that's going away. And so, the ask is for him to come back. We have salary savings in our budgets from other positions. He won't be doing anything related to the job of battalion chief. He'll be very specific in terms of what roles he's going to do and play for us, which is specific to the projects that Cosima spoke to. We anticipate in the retired annuitant, it's 960 hours total time throughout the course of the fiscal year. Our intent right now is really just to utilize him for the balance of this year, and we don't anticipating him being in a full-time role. So, in terms of maximizing the hours, I don't anticipate that. It's within our budget, and it's intended for us to fill some gaps that we have with that institutional knowledge. And again, 37 years of experience out the door, to be able to harness some of that is going to be high value with those specific projects at hand.
Yeah, I hear you. I guess I'm just trying to, are you, so, if I'm reading between the lines, are you considering this sort of like a cost savings opportunity then, since you get him back for a limited period of time, as opposed to a permanent promotion?
No, so we're making, Councilmember Marr, we're making a formal promotion.
Yeah, the battalion chief position, but I'm talking about this administrative role around CAT RMS specifically.
Yeah, correct. So, in terms of the projects he's going to be heading up or continuing to stay on with, as he hands them off to the other battalion chiefs or stepping into the role, that's really what that is. It's a transition time for us to still utilize that knowledge base and skills, the skill sets that he has. He's the subject matter expert in a number of the areas that we identified. So, it's just really utilizing this time for that, and all within the means of our budget.
So, one last question. Did it come as a surprise that any, that either of the battalion chiefs were retiring?
Did it come as a surprise, just so I'm clear, did it come as a surprise as the battalion chiefs, meaning Chief Coats and now Chief Kershaw?
Right. I mean, we're talking a lot about caring over institutional knowledge, but I don't, I don't think either of them were surprised retirements then, right? We expected them to happen?
Yeah, no, Chief Kershaw's been talking about retiring for the past five years. So, in terms of that, no, not necessarily a surprise. But, yeah, we've been downloading quite a bit of information, quite a bit, as much as you can, but the final handoff is significant. And again, we're also in a code adoption cycle as well, and we haven't seen this significant transition in terms of chief officers, three chief officers, in the course of what will be about four months. And while we're certainly well-prepared for it, we've got a very deep bench, and we've done a lot for succession planning. It's something that we have, we obviously put on the table. It's the first time we've asked for retired annuitant. We find it very important for us to continue doing what we're doing and to have great success, not just now, but as we move into the forward, into 2026 and beyond.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions, let's open it up to the public. I don't see anybody on, in the chambers coming up. How about on Zoom?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll close public comment. Do, okay, motion by Councilmember Gamaros. What is your motion?
I'd like to go with staff recommendation.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Pettis. And so, do you wish to be heard on your motion?
No.
Second, you wish to be heard? Okay, let's call for the question by a voice.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yeah, of course.
Yeah, I'll be supporting the motion, but I do, I just do want to encourage the chief and the city manager that as we approach mid-year, you know, if there is a need for additional positions within the administrative staff, if there is a need for additional support, I think it would behoove us to plan for that as a city and accommodate in the budget as opposed to having to drag someone back after they've retired after 37 years. I certainly think that, you know, if you look at the, the police department hasn't been shy about asking for permission to hire additional staff as things have changed, but I don't know that we've gotten that many requests from fire. And so, if we think that the workload is shifting, if we've got additional projects like CAT RMS that are going to require additional staffing, I would certainly encourage staff to make the request during mid-year to figure out how we can accommodate those additional needs, especially as we see an increase in calls for service. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. And with that, let's call for the question.
All right, Councilmember Gamaros?
Yes.
Councilmember Beulie? Councilmember Marr?
Yes.
Councilmember Pettis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Okay, now we're moving on to new business item number two.
Adoption of the Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Costa Mesa and the Costa Mesa Police Association, the Costa Mesa Police Management Association, the Costa Mesa Firefighters Association, and the Costa Mesa Fire Management Association. Presentation by Ms. Lee, Human Resources Manager.
Ms. Lee, you don't have to move a muscle. You're right in the right place. So, you have the floor.
Yes. Good evening again, Mayor and members of the City Council. Tonight, we bring forth the adoption of MOUs for CMPA, CMPA, CMFA, and CMFMA. The current MOUs for CMFA and CMFMA were approved by the City Council on February 20, 2024, and are scheduled to expire on June 30, 2027. The letters of agreements for CMPA, CMPA for a successor MOU were approved by the City Council on June 17, 2025, and the pending MOUs are scheduled to expire on June 30, 2026. Each MOU or agreement includes language stating that the parties can agree to update language that is outdated or needs modification. The Human Resources Division collaborated with each group regarding updated language in the current and new MOUs. Government Code Section 20636 and 7522.34 in the California Government Code of Regulations defines compensation earnable or pensionable compensation for CalPERS classic and new members. The California Code of Regulation Section 571 requires that all items of special compensation be contained in a written labor policy and include the conditions of payment. Some examples of special compensation include bilingual pay, holiday pay, special assignment pay, education pay, certification, and recruitment and retention pay. The new MOU for CMPA and CMPA, and then the updated MOUs for CMFA and CMFMA include language updates for special compensation items for compliance with the Pearl, PEPRA, California Government Code and Title II of the California Code of Regulations. It also incorporates the negotiated provisions per previous side letters and the current letters of agreement for CMPA and CMPA, so they're all consolidated into one document. We also did general language updates for provisions that may have been outdated, needed modification, or inconsistency amongst the groups with the agreements from the associations. The recommendation today is to adopt the new MOU for CMPA and CMPA and the revised MOU for CMFA and CMFMA. There is no additional fiscal impact as the language updates are administrative in nature. This item supports the City Council's plan goals to recruit and retain high-quality employees and strengthen the public safety and improve the quality of life. And I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Excellent presentation. Any questions, council? Okay, I don't see anybody wanting to ask questions. Anybody from the public wish to speak in the chambers? No? On Zoom? Oh, hold on. On Zoom?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Closed public comment. Councilmember Gamaros, you have the floor to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to approve all of staff's recommendations.
Okay. I will second that motion. You wish to be heard?
Nope.
Okay. All right. Well, on behalf of the second, as much as, as much as I'm the mayor, I just want to say thank you very much to staff and the council and bargaining units for working on these MOUs. This is an extremely important department that we couldn't do without, and I'm very proud to vote on this and to support this motion. Very proud of the work our PD does from top to bottom. It's a wonderful group, from the command staff to the explorers, and we're very fortunate. Not every city has a PD like we do, and I'm happy that we could come to a good agreement here, and I know it's going to be unanimous vote. Let's call for the question.
Councilmember Beulie?
Yes.
Councilmember Gamaros?
Yes.
Councilmember Marr is now absent. Councilmember Pettis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, excellent. All right, we're down, if I'm not mistaken, we're down to our, it's a big, big lot of paper, but it's our last item. So, please read the title.
Professional Services Agreement with Endemic Environmental Services Incorporated for the Fairview Park Mesa Restoration Project, an Addendum to the 1997 Initial Study Mitigating Negative Declaration for Fairview Park. Presentation by Mr. Gruner, Parks and Community Services Director.
All right, there you guys are. You look like FBI agents. What's that, what's that movie with Will Smith, Men in Black?
Men in Black.
I mean, my gosh. It's all right. Which agent wants to speak first? Director Gruner?
I will honor your mayor.
All right.
Good evening, and good evening, councilmembers. Good evening, the community members. Yeah, we're presenting to you tonight the Fairview Park Mesa Restoration Agreement, looking for a ward of contract. Mr. Dalton here, who has been working on this project for a number of years, will be conducting the presentation. I do want to also mention that Leslie Hill from OCTA is here, available for, for any questions that the council may have after the presentation or during the discussion portion of this item. So, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Dalton to start the presentation.
Thank you, Director Gruner. I'm just going to open the presentation quickly. Good evening, council, and honorable mayor. Appreciate all the public coming out to hear this item tonight, and we're excited to move forward with this long-awaited project. A little bit of background for the Fairview Park Mesa Restoration Project. This actually was originally, part of the original master plan in 1998. That was developed with the community over a number of years after purchasing the site. The Fairview Park Master Plan calls for the restoration of the park's natural vegetation communities and preservation of the site's cultural resources that are found throughout the site, but particularly on the Mesa site. Going to 2011, the city committed and entered into an agreement with Orange County Transportation Authority to restore 23 acres as part of the OCTA M2 Environmental Mitigation Program, and that was for the Wetlands and Repairing Habitat Project. We were awarded $2 million. Moving to 2022, the city was awarded another chunk of funds from the Senator Min's office. There was a number of parks, projects that the city received funding for. Fairview Park was fortunate to receive $2 million for the Fairview Park Mesa Restoration. Moving to present day, and 2024, the city adopted the CIP, the $2 million for these funds in the 2023, 2024 CIP budget. During that year, 2024, we worked with a consultant to prepare, to prepare the restoration design, perform environmental planning, and we also prepared a separate cultural resource and archaeological monitoring plan that is a confidential document, but will be provided to the awarded consultant during the implementation process. We went out to implementation in September of 2020, excuse me, September of 2024. We were notified by the California Department of Fish and Wildlife upon discovering an endangered bumblebee that's present at the site, that we were required to obtain an incidental take permit. So, that delayed the project by approximately one year, bringing us to now. A little bit of background in terms of the purpose of the Mesa Restoration, what it's intended to accomplish. When we, when we say the Mesa, we refer to really the 50-acre flat or plateau area of the park. It's kind of the defining feature of Fairview Park. The purpose is to restore the indigenous plant communities of the Mesa that really draws in the native and protected wildlife that thrive in and around this Mesa site. It's also a core purpose of the project is to preserve and protect the Aura 58 Archaeological Resources Site. That's a site that's listed on the National Register of Historic Places, and it's extremely sensitive and sacred to the tribal community. Moving forward to the, another aspect of this project that will be involved in the future is the fill debris. A lot of that was deposited in the late 80s. It degrades the site. This particular phase of the project is not removing that fill, but that is considered part of the future need for the site. This project, again, is part of the original master plan, but it's also part of the 2008 last revised Fairview Park Master Plan. And importantly, it fulfills the Orange County Transportation Authority mitigation requirements. In terms of the project scope and just looking at this figure, the basic tasks are outlined here on the left, but just want to draw your attention to the map figure here. It kind of shows that shaded area in light orange, that's the project area that we are awarding this evening. It's about 15.3 acres, the entire boundary of the site. However, only a percentage of that is going to be considered true restoration. Some of the areas are going to be native plant enhancement, as well as a weed management buffer that's going to protect some of the high-priority invasive plants that are, that are in that fill-affected area from encroaching and expanding into this restoration area. Those, those green lines traversing through the project, those are also the circulation trails that they will remain open. that they will remain open throughout the implementation process. I know that community access and public access was a recurring topic of discussion when we presented this project throughout the Fairview Park Steering Committee meetings over the last couple of years. We wanted to make that abundantly clear, that those recreational trails will remain open. They will be maintained and kept accessible for public use. Bringing us to the project map, just to get an idea of some of the predominant vegetation communities that you're going to see out there. On the Mesa, in that green area, that's going to be a phasalia-dominated fiddle neck, so there's going to be some flower fields that you'll see, some nice wildflowers cropping up in the spring and early summer, and then in the kind of cyan or light blue areas of the north bluff and the part of the canyon, that's going to be a black sage scrub, kind of a coastal sage scrub vegetation community that will be, there are some of those communities already present at Fairview Park, but this is sort of expanding off of some of that completed restoration, as well as sort of growing off of what was already completed in past restoration in the lower wetlands in the northwest corner of Fairview Park. In terms of the contractor selection process, as I mentioned, the RFP for this project went out last year, about a year ago. Endemic Environmental was determined to be the most qualified firm after a series of interviews with the top three consultants. Some of the notable projects that they have completed in the past include some work for Orange County Water District at the Prado Sediment Basin Demonstration, as well as a rich history of working in Fairview Park here. The lead biologist at Endemic, Barry Nairhus, has been working with Fairview Park for upwards of 15 years and has a really good understanding of some of the local sensitive resources here and as well worked around some of the past projects as well. He's also familiar with working around the culturally sensitive site, which is extremely important to prevent future damage and further impact to the sensitive resources. With that, we recommend that the four staff recommendations before you this evening, approving the addendum to the 1997 Initial Study Mitigated Negative Declaration, awarding the Professional Services Agreement to Endemic Environmental for the seven-year term, authorizing the 10% contingency, and authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute the PSA and future amendments. With that, we will turn it over for any questions.
Council, any questions? For the agents? No? Okay, let's open it up to the public. Anybody who wishes to speak?
Good evening, Mayor Stevens and honorable members of City Council. Omuyum cho, choonam nuneskiyam, no dang moyilapeshwa. Good evening, all my relations. My name is Shannon Wingfield. I am the tribal council of the One Annual Band of Mission Indians Ahashman Nation, and we are the original inhabitants of these lands that now form Orange County, including the sacred grounds of Fairview Park. For over 9,000 years, our people, the Ahashmen, have stewarded this coastal territory from the bluffs and vernal pools to the riparian habitats that sustain our cultural stories, ceremonies, and connections to the earth. Fairview Park is not just an open space, it's part of our ancestral homeland and a living archive of our heritage, home to archaeology, sensitive sites, and essential habitats for species we have protected for generations. And as one of our tribal elders and cultural director, Adelia Sandoval, has reminded us, this land itself does not have a voice, and we must speak for it. The tribe stands with the Coastal Corridor Alliance in urging you to uphold the city's commitments for Fairview Park Mesa's Restoration Project. This restoration aligns directly with our values in healing and balance with nature, removing invasive species to revive native ecosystems like coastal sage scrub and wetlands that support endangered plants and birds. Over 220 species are documented here, including those at risk of extinction that Measure AA explicitly protects. Keep in mind, this area, this park, is a mere 1.2% of Costa Mesa's total area. These ecosystems are fragile, and they need space to thrive. Of these plants and animals, if they don't exist here, they will cease to exist. If it fills the city's long overdue obligations, the funding pledge to the state, the 11-plus acres mitigation commitment to OCTA for freeway impacts are now more than a decade behind, and the Fairview Park Master Plan's vision from 1998 for native habitat restoration, legal trails, and passive recreation that honors our shared history. We know the opposition's claims about lost access, trails, conflicts with Measure AA are unfounded. Legal trails will remain open for quiet enjoyment restoration. It's explicitly exempted as significant change, which declares the park essential habitat to be preserved for future generations. Dealing this risk not only OCTA's permits, but the very ecological and cultural integrity of our territory and its original stewards, we implore you, approve this restoration, protect our habitat, honor the mitigation promises, and keep Fairview Park as a nature preserve as it was designed to be, for our ancestors, our wildlife, and all who seek solace in its beauty. Thank you for your time and respect for this land.
Thank you. Thank you very much for being here. Yes, you have the floor.
Good evening. My name is Aaliyah Willow. I am a fourth-generation Costa Mason. Quickly before I get into my words on the park, I just, since we've brought in a couple people who have died this week, I also want to speak to Trey Reed, a young man who was found lynched in Mississippi. And I just want to speak to the rampant violence and dehumanization that is going on at this moment, especially as we look to our native lands and the way that we strip them of their own non-human but personhood that they do have. I have lived in Costa Mesa my whole life, and I have lived in every corner of Costa Mesa, and if I were to think of one place that is home, it is Fairview Park and specifically the Bluff. It is a integral, integral place of biodiversity. The resilience of this land has been a backdrop to my life, the red-tailed hawks, the herons, the sparrows sailing on the winds that are rich in the smell of sagebrush and sage, endangered ecosystem that is imperative to the biodiversity that we see around us. Making their home in this small sliver of native land that we designate for them is important that we are their voice. I am a community member, I'm a business owner, and I'm a full-time Costa Mason. Everything I need is in a two-mile radius here, including the park, and my heart is so full here. I host monthly donation-based plant walks in Fairview Park, where I share the love story that I have for each of my plant and animal neighbors and their ever-threatening and decreasing habitats. I hear overwhelming feedback from my human community that knowing these plants gives them a sense of belonging, and that they too feel less like a visitor and more like a neighbor to this precious space. And that's something so sacred about our native Californian ecosystems is that they require you to slow down, they require you to look with intention. So I implore you to listen to those who live here and who are benefiting from these wild lands, and to listen to those who are speaking for the endangered bees, burrowing owls, the fairy shrimp, those that are too small to see, and I'm very grateful for all of the time that I get to share in that special space. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, yes, sir, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. My name is Serge Jatalis. I'm with the Coastal Corridor Alliance, and so I love Fairview Park, obviously, and I really enjoy going there, taking walks with my son and his staff, teaching him and the community about the native habitat, the flora, the fun, and all of that, and how everyone benefits from that, not just the wildlife, but also we as humans. And so there's just a few things that I would want to mention. So Costa Mesa received $2 million from the Orange County Transportation Authority through its environmental mitigation program. That funding was given to restore critical habitat on the Mesa. When the initial work fell short of the required acreage, staff secured additional funding so that the project could meet requirements and stay aligned with the Fairview Master Plan. These aren't optional dollars, they were tied to the grant commitment that must be fulfilled. This project would restore more than 15 acres of native vegetation on the northern Mesa and the Bluff. It addresses both biological and cultural resources and exactly the type of work that park was set aside to accomplish. And there has been a couple of confusions, so I just want to point, I'm going to point a couple of those. Public access will remain, legal trails will stay open, while unauthorized trails, which are already harming cultural sites and habitat, will be closed. And this project is fully consistent with the Measure AA, which specifically supports native habitat restoration. It's not considered a significant change under this measure, and it doesn't require a public vote. So I encourage you to move forward with this, so that the environment benefits from it, and that we all benefit from it, and that we choose to protect and observe it for all the generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Kim.
Yes, I would like to support this item, and I hope that you guys approve it. It's been a long time coming, and I have been trying to educate you guys about the nature in Fairview Park for years now, and how and why biodiversity is important to us as humans. And I don't, and I feel like maybe I haven't done a good job, that's why I keep coming back. So I hope you guys will watch on Netflix, I know everybody has Netflix, A Life on Our Planet. Not Life on Our Planet series, but A Life on Our Planet. It's David Attenborough's witness statement of why biodiversity is necessary for our own survival. And so even if you don't care about nature, you don't want to go take a walk in it, that cup of coffee you're drinking is important to have, I love coffee too. Biodiversity is important. And Fairview Park, I didn't grow up in Costa Mesa. I'm an Air Force brat. I was born in upstate New York, I lived in Greece for four years, I lived in Carmel. My father went to the language school up in Presidio. I lived in Connecticut. My father retired in Huntington Beach, so I've seen a little bit about the world. And Fairview Park is really a gem and worth saving for the community. I also am a retired teacher, and students benefit from nature. And there's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. My son, who grew up in Costa Mesa, he's in the military, he's in Vicenza now, in the 173rd Airborne, he's going to become a commercial pilot, and he never liked those planes out there kicking the birds out, because you have to have priorities of the whole community. Even if you don't like nature, you have to do what's good for the whole community, and it's good for the whole community to restore it. And I've watched you guys up there, and I do commend you guys for these long meetings. I don't know how you guys do it. So thank you, and I hope you guys pass this. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Jay, you have the floor.
Good evening, Council again. Jay Humphrey, Costa Mesa resident. Like everybody that's been up here tonight on this issue has said, I support all that commentary, ditto from me. This is a unique resource for the city of Costa Mesa, one that does not exist anywhere else. I strongly, strongly support approval of this item. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jay. Is there anybody on Zoom?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Phone number ending in 133.
133, you have the floor.
Hi there, this is Melanie Schlotterbeck. I am one of more than 30 organizations that supported renewed Measure M back in the early 2000s. I have been involved with the Orange County Transportation Authority through its Environmental Oversight Committee for the past 17 years. I serve as the vice chair for the EOC, and I want to congratulate the city of Costa Mesa for successfully competing in our competitive process. We had acquisition and restoration projects that went through a deep analysis to determine whether or not these projects provided a benefit and aligned with the transportation impacts. It did. Fairview Park was one of the winners, as you know, received grant funding. I know there was a calculation error related to the 9.5 acres, and I want to commend staff, especially Kelly Dalton, for his work not only keeping the Environmental Oversight Committee apprised of the status of updating the maps and getting those acres funded. Those dollars are important to complete the mitigation process, but are also hard to come by. It also sounds like a lot of the staff and the public understand that there were red herrings posted in community notes about public access, Measure AA, and the Fairview Park Master Plan alignment, so I won't go into that. I do want to say it's important that Costa Mesa maintain its partnership with OCTA. One of the mottos that OCTA came up with after the first measure back in the 1990s was promises made, promises kept, and I'm hoping that Costa Mesa keeps its promise to OCTA to complete this mitigation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else on Zoom?
Yes, Cynthia, please.
Cynthia, you have the floor.
Good evening, Cynthia McDonald, Costa Mesa resident. I urge you to approve this contract so that the Mesa Restoration Project can move forward without any more delay. This project is tied to a grant and is part of a mitigation agreement with OCTA. If the city fails to complete the work, it will be in default under the terms of that agreement and could face serious consequences. Most importantly, we risk losing the funding entirely if we don't act now. This project has already been approved by the City Council. I reviewed the three technical reports prepared in connection with the updated master plan, and it is clear that this restoration effort is consistent with both the current master plan and the goals of Measure AA. Because this is a restoration project, it does not require public vote under Measure AA. As someone who has attended many Fairview Park Steering Committee meetings, I've never heard city staff suggest that this project conflicts with the draft updated master plan that's currently under review. Unfortunately, there's a lot of misinformation circulating about this project. Tonight's hearing is not about reversing an already-approved project, nor is it about revoking HSS's use of the runway. Discussing either of those issues tonight would violate the Brown Act, as they are not on the agenda and have not been properly noticed. The project will preserve public access to approved trails while removing only unauthorized trails that are harming sensitive habitat and threatening protected species. It will also preserve important archaeological resources in this area of the park. Please approve the PSA with Endemic so that this critical restoration work can begin before the rainy season commences and the grant funding can be preserved. Finally, I ask that you close the meeting in the memory of Melissa Hortman. She was an elected official, a wife, and a mom. She was murdered. Please honor her memory as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. Anybody else on Zoom?
Deborah, please.
Who, who? Brett?
Deborah.
Deborah, Deborah. Hi, you have the floor, Deborah.
Hi. Can you hear me?
We sure can, Deborah.
Okay, thank you. This is Debbie Kokan, longtime resident of Costa Mesa. I urge you to approve this contract and start the restoration project. Costa Mesa has received millions of dollars in grants to restore this habitat, and we're 10 years overdue to do it. We have contractual obligations. We need to fulfill the grant requirements. Costa Mesa acquired Fairview Park in the first place as a nature park for habitat and passive human recreation. This project is more than consistent with Measure AA. It is the intent of Measure AA to preserve and protect Fairview Park, and restoration of the Mesa is specifically listed as an objective of AA. These goals are also required by U.S. Fish and Wildlife. We've seen correspondence from them urging the city to restore the park, and we have our obligation to the Orange County Transportation Agency, Transportation Authority. The park contains endangered plants and animals, archaeologically sensitive site, and rare vernal pools. We need to protect them for future generations and preserve Fairview Park as a gem.
Tell him I want to talk, too.
My husband is sitting here, too, and he also wants to talk.
Hi, Terry. What do you have to say?
Hello, Mayor Stevens and all you other creatures. I'm a member of the OCME, Orange County Model Engineers. We run a railroad on the other side of the park, and we take care of it. There should have been some mowing going on and st... care of it. There should have been some mowing going on. Instead, we had one of our members out with a weed whacker chopping down all that crummy mustard. And on the other side of the park, you know, it really needs some tender loving care. And some tender loving care and some marking to indicate, maybe a little better than it does, where those vernal pools are and where the boundaries are. And maybe it would be nice if our park rangers out there had a bit more authority to bust people and throw them in jail when they do things like driving their trucks into the vernal pools and, you know, dropping their, dropping their gliders in. And, well, you know, Jay Humphrey and I and my wife and a whole bunch of others got Measure AA on the ballot, and it got passed with a 70%. That indicates something good about Fairview Park. Let's, let's make it better. Thank you.
Thanks, Terry. Who's next?
Phone number ending in 613.
613, you have the floor.
Yes, hi, good evening. So I was a, I wasn't a member of the Banning Ranch Board. I was asked to join, but decided not to do it for blowback to that wonderful community. But in the years of observing what happened with that process of the Banning Ranch development being denied, I saw nature take back its own environment. So I'm going to get the numbers wrong here, but they're pretty close. The ExxonMobil developers wanted to build on 89 acres. And the Coastal Commission said, no, you can build on 83. And then ExxonMobil developers said, okay, well, let's continue this and see what happens. We want 89. Well, when that item got continued, we had this tremendous rain season, and ExxonMobil lost the ability to build on 89 acres and went down to like 67 acres, because the project, you're not allowed to build on environmentally sensitive habitat, and they lost all this land space because there was rain that happened. And the point I'm commenting to where it's not people that bring back the environment, it's the environment that brings back the environment. The environment knows what it's doing. It's like the perfect capitalism. If it's not going to succeed, it goes away. And when the environment, in our environment, has a chance to be what it is, it becomes what it is. We don't need to pay any consultants to tell us what's best for our environment. We need to let the environment do what the environment does. So when we are paying for the environment to do what we want it to do, we are impacting the environment. It does what it needs to do, you know. So these people that think that you can put a tax on whatever to make the environment better, clueless, absolute clueless. Let the environment show you what the environment needs to do, and that's what the environment will do. There is a track record called environmental history. Thank you very much.
Richard, please.
Richard, you have the floor.
Hello. Good evening. Rick Huffman here. As a board member of the Coastal Corridor Alliance, I fully support the letter sent to the mayor by our president, Dr. Terry Welsh. On behalf of myself, I will say that for the city to fulfill its contractual obligations with OCTA, it must complete this project. Previous mitigation efforts did not fully restore the required acreage, but the city now has necessary funding, needs its commitments, satisfy the mitigation requirements, carry out additional restoration work. This expanded restoration effort is consistent with the Fairview Park master plan. Having attended steering committee meetings and reviewed staff presentations, it is clear that the project will preserve access to authorized trails, continue to support the activities of the soaring society even, and protect sensitive habitat and endangered species. Importantly, this project is focused on habitat restoration, does not require public vote under Measure AA. Fairview Park is a rare and valuable ecological resource. Its native habitat and species are found in few other places in California. Costa Mesa residents overwhelmingly support Measure AA because they wanted to see projects like this, projects that restore and protect parks, natural environment. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Priscilla, please.
Priscilla, you have the floor.
Good evening. To create or restore a work of art requires expertise, patience, and hard work. Destruction is easy. All you need is brute force. There is a group spreading lies and half-truths online and with emails, as their ultimate goal is to fly planes and ride motorcycles and dirt bikes through the largest vernal pool complex west in the Mississippi, tearing up the archaeological artifacts from the Fairview Indian site, and run roughshod over hundreds of species of animals, native plants, and biodiverse ecosystems. And so far, I'm afraid, the city council has been helping them, possibly because a member of this group publicly threatened to oust any council member from office who doesn't vote as they're told. And so far, the council has knuckled under again and again, out of fear or perhaps because of favors. Tonight, the council must listen to the scientists, experts, laws, and facts, and approve this contract and addendum with endemic, preserving the grant funding to restore 11-plus acres promised to OCTA, which is a decade overdue, to uphold their $4.5 million funding commitment to the state for restoration, and their overall designation of Fairview Park as a nature park for habitat and passive human recreation. Despite what many have heard, this restoration is in keeping with Measure AA and the current Fairview Park master plan. Legal trails on the mesa and elsewhere will be open during the public, to the public during the project. And this contract has nothing whatsoever to do with harbor soaring society. Preserving the jewel of Fairview Park for future generations of children and ecotourists is in keeping with the 70% of the public who voted Measure AA into law, protecting and preserving Fairview Park. Please vote for this. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Priscilla. Anybody else on?
Hank, please.
Hank? It's good to hear from you. What do you have to say?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, and staff. This is Hank Castignetti. I'm Orange County Model Engineer, city liaison, and I want to go on record for the organization as being in full support of this item, and we hope you will approve the restoration of the west side while we occupy the right side, the east side. It is equally important for us to preserve the nature in the park. As I've said many times before, that without the diverse nature in that, in the park, we've got nothing to show you from our trains but dirt, and you can see that in your own backyard. So we, we go on record as supporting this, this item, and we thank you for your consideration.
No further speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, let's close public comment. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the staff's recommendation.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Chavez. Yeah, this is a project that's a long time coming. Should have been done a long time ago. It's a deal that we cut with OCTA. For some reason, it didn't move forward, and now it's on us. In addition to that, I think it's an excellent project, and we really don't have any wiggle room here. I mean, we have to comply with the contracts that we enter into. So that's the important thing. And also, we treasure our, our relationship with OCTA. I mean, I happen to be a director, but just as a resident, what, what the OCTA brings to the table in the city of Costa Mesa through Measure M2 money and other support is just incredible. And this is just another example of that. And so I am proud to make this motion. I'm proud of this project. I love the presentation by our agents. And thank, and thank you very much for all the members of the public who weighed in. And I, I know you guys really care about the park, and I appreciate your input. Second?
No comments. Good motion.
Anybody else? Okay, with that, let's call for the voice vote.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, yes.
Since Councilmember Martin is no longer on, you can use the screens to vote?
Oh, well.
The clerk still needs you to do a voice vote.
I guess we could. Shall we use the screens? What would, what would the clerk prefer?
I'd rather the council.
All right, let's, let's put, let's, let's push buttons.
Councilmember Pettis, please.
Pushing buttons, pushing buttons.
Councilmember Pettis, please.
Try it.
Just try it.
Should we do a hybrid?
Okay.
Okay.
Motion carries 5-0.
5-0, good job. Okay, so this is, this is the time where we come to adjournment, and we can make some comments. And so if any other council member were here, we're not even at nine o'clock. So I mean, you know, we've got, we can make some comments. I just want to say, not to be lost, what the city attorney announced. We voted today to appoint Cecilia Gallardo-Daly as our city manager, and I want to recognize that and say that I think that that was a great decision by the council. She's going to do a remarkable job. She's already doing a great job. And to come in and, and do a spectacular job over the last four months, and I know that that's going to continue on to the future. So I couldn't be more thrilled with that vote. Could, could not be more thrilled and supportive, supportive of that vote. And then as for the adjournments, Charlie Kirk, we mentioned that, Robert Redford, and then a number of people in the community have asked us to include Melissa Hortman and also her husband, Mark, who was also, they were assassinated in June 14, 2025. And, you know, God bless Robert Redford. I mean, what a, what a terrific guy, and what an interesting coincidence that on the night that we made this last vote, a unanimous vote, that we honor Robert Redford, who cared so much about the environment. And anybody who's seen his movies, A River Runs Through It and so forth, and everything he's done for the environment. So we, we, we honor him and, and condolences to his family and all of his fans. And as for the others who were the subject of political violence and assassinations, it's just terrible, as I said before. And please let this not be a time, as it was in the 60s, where we had the two Kennedy brothers and Martin Luther King and Malcolm X and so many people that were assassinated. Please, please, tonight, get down on your knees and pray that it stops now. We're adjourned.